Good evening, everyone. At this time, I'd like to call to order the December 14th East Whiteland Township Supervisor's final 2022 meeting and John Nagel's final meeting here at the podium as township manager. I am joined on my left Peter Fixler, Supervisor, John Nagel on my right, Rich Orlo, Vice Chair, and Bernadette Kearney, our Solicitor. Tonight, as has been somewhat customary this past year, unfortunately, we would like to start off our meeting with a moment of silence for two, to remember two people in our community that passed away recently. First one is Tony Plinknick, who passed away on November 24th. Tony was a resident in Malvern for 48 years and was one of the early zoning hearing board members, was heavily involved with commercial real estate. A neighbor as well, I remember one of the things that he said to me eight years ago when he saw that I was running for supervisor, he said, "Are you out of your blinking mind running for supervisor?" He was a very open and great person that helped out in the community. Also, Jennifer Krasna passed away on November 28th, just days after giving birth to her second child, and she was a teacher, first grade teacher at Charlestown Elementary School here in Malvern. She was in her eighth year teaching here. I did not know Jennifer, but all of the reports and readings that I've heard, tremendous person, tremendous loss. So we'd like to take a moment of silence and remember these two folks. In addition, I believe two weeks ago, there was a fire, residential fire in a nearby township, and two volunteer firemen passed away. I'd like Greg Lewis to lead us through thoughts on that.
On Wednesday, December 7, 2022, the New Tripoli Fire Company in Lehigh County was dispatched to the 1100 block of Clamtown Road in West Penn Township in Schuylkill County around 4:00 PM for a structure fire. Initial reports indicated a possible trapped occupant in the residence. Assistant Chief Zachary Parrish, 36 years of age, and firefighter Marvin Gruber, 59 years of age, both entered the residence in attempt to locate the trapped occupant. About one hour into the incident, both individuals became trapped in the second floor of the residence. A May Day was declared and a RIT team was activated to locate the down firefighters. Approximately 30 minutes later, both firefighters were located and extricated from the residence. Both firefighters were rushed to a nearby hospital, but both later succumbed to their injuries. Assistant Chief Parrish recently graduated in September 2022 from the Frederick County, Maryland Fire Department Fire Academy. Assistant Chief Parrish leaves behind a wife and two young daughters. Firefighter Gruber worked at the Public Safety Department at the North Hampton Community College for the last 15 years. Firefighter Gruber leaves behind a wife and two children. This is a grim reminder of the dangers firefighters face not only in East Whiteland Township, but across this nation. If you could all join me in a moment of silence for Assistant Chief Zachary Parrish and firefighter Marvin Gruber.
Thank you, Greg. It is a reminder of how fortunate we are to have a great team protecting us and the safety that surrounds and the risks that occur each time you folks go out on a call, police, and fire and EMT. I'd like to move on to the Board briefings. We had an executive session that was held on November 16th at 10:00 AM. We discussed personnel, legal, and real estate issues. This afternoon, we had a 5:00 PM executive session that entailed, again, legal, personal, and real estate issues. Next up is that our, talk about our Township Manager Succession Plan. Our Board and John have agreed recently that over the past six or seven months that he will complete his current role and retire as East Whiteland Township Manager in December 31st of 2022. Starting in January of '23, John will serve the Board in a new role as a Special Projects On January 1, at that time, Steve Brown, our Assistant Manager, will become promoted to Township Manager. John will support and advise both the Board and Steve on those key matters through June of 2023. And we wanted to recognize John for his 35 years of service and recent appointment as a life member to the International City Managers Association. I would like the Board and myself to point out some of the highlights of John's tenure in the 35-year period. I'll lead off with that John has had a long distinguished career in public service, working for different communities in southeastern Pennsylvania, and that being in East Whiteland Township, the city of Reading, Whitpan Township, Montgomery Township. And in his 35 years, he has served those communities as a Finance Director, Director of Admission, or, I'm sorry, Director of Administrative Services and Township Manager. He has also had stints in the private sector, working both for a bank and as a consultant in the financial advisory capacity. He's also been active in professional associations, many of them in this community, including the International City County Management Association, the Association of Pennsylvania Municipal Managers, GFOA, County Manager Consortiums in both Chester and Montgomery Counties, and Transportation Management Agency of Chester County, TMAC. We're here in Whiteland Township. We've had the good fortune of having John's service here for the last seven years, and if Rich can lead us with some of John's other highlights?
Sure. John was responsible for many, many items here over the past five years, six years? How long was it?
Seven.
Seven years? Okay.
Yeah.
I see, I see that smile now.
Getting closer.
John was instrumental in restructuring the finance department, adding a new position, creating the HR department, hiring a new manager, creating a planning and zoning department with a director and assistant director, restructuring the fire, EMS, and codes area, creating an Assistant Township Manager position with Steve, creating an Operations Manager position. Done. New and updated practices, policies, and procedures organization-wide, and guided the organization through the COVID-19 pandemic, which wasn't easy. In the finance area, helped with the preparation and adoption of a multi-year financial management plan, which is largely why the township is financially very stable at the moment. The GFOA Certificate of Achievement for Excellence, which stands for Government Finance Officers Association, I had to look that up.
Quite all right.
In financial reporting for the township. Helped with the earned income tax, which is the largest part of our revenue source, and put in place new and updated practices, policies, and procedures for finance. In his spare time, he was involved with the municipal campus and the new police station building planning, the sale of the sewer collection and conveyance system, applying for the RACE grant for Lancaster Avenue, and in the police department area, restructured the department and institutionalized professional practices, policies, and procedures, which along with the police staff led to our recent accreditation.
Very good. Thank you, Rich. I'm going to just continue on, which is co-tails in speaking John's praises of what he has achieved in his tenure here. In fire, EMS, and codes, he helped restructure those departments. More recently, in codes, he implemented the TASER system, and also with fire and EMS, or EMTs, the additional hiring of three firefighters, which has been much needed. In the public works, definitely has helped increase the emphasis on roads and improve the roads in the township through road rating inventory system, and has kept up with, as John yelled, placing all the required equipment on the schedule. For parks and rec, helped in the Back to Hill Park construction, helped implement the PROS plan and its development and adoption, and funding for a park and rec staff position for 2023. In planning and zoning, the big emphasis on preparation and adoption of the Route 30 Quarter Plan, which is being, trying to be implemented through these RACE grants. And back to you, Scott.
Thank you, gentlemen. These projects and the efforts undertaken and overseen by John over these seven years has had really one main purpose, and that's to improve the township with the organization in terms of efficiency and its operational standards. I think the goal in John's work was always to better serve our business and our residents and be responsive to them. And certainly, we, the Board, want to thank John for all that he's achieved, all of his efforts, and wish him well in his semi-retirement starting in January 1. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
And if anyone else has any comments they would like to make?
I just have a few words. I just wanted to offer my congratulations to John on a long and successful career in public service, which I personally believe is a noble calling. Not many may see it that way, especially when you work for a municipality and you can get lost in the day-to-day weeds, as it were, sometimes literally dealing with weeds, as John Matea will tell us, but, and as John Nagel will. But I really think it is a noble calling, and I think John does too. And I found this quote by, actually Winston Churchill, and he said, "We make a living by what we get, but we make a life by what we give." And John really dedicated his career to giving to this community and other communities, and for that, he has my gratitude and respect. Thank you, John.
Comment?
First, I couldn't have written it better myself. And the June 23rd date, I don't know what I can do to top what's been said, so we need to talk about that. I'm being facetious. So first off, thank you all for your gratitude. I want to especially thank the Board first and foremost. I had a date in mind for retirement, and then, as you all know, an experienced COVID hit, the economy hit, and then it hit with my 401 plan. So we had to extend our plan for retirement a bit, and the Board was very understanding of that, and we were able to work out, I think, a very well-thought-out and collegial process for me to retire in December and then to basically share some institutional knowledge with the staff, especially with Steve. But I truly do appreciate the Board's support. In the time I've been here, there's seven different Board members I've worked with in the last seven years. So it's a little bit of a stretch when I came here, because two out of three of them left in January, less than a year after I was here, so, but I knew that coming into the job, so not to digress on that part of it. Additionally, I'd like to thank the staff. I mean, all of this stuff happens as a result of all of the people that are in this organization. I look at myself as really the band conductor. I don't, as many of you know who know me well, I don't know a lot about the details of a lot that goes on. I believe you hire really smart people, and then you try to stay as much out of the way as you can and just kind of manage or lead the process. So thanks to all of the staff, past and present, that I've worked with, and I just want to say thanks for supporting me in being able to report back to the Board on the things that have been important to Board's past and present here. And I want to especially thank Steve, who I call my co-manager. We connected with each other in a similar fashion, because we ended up connecting with each other about five or six years ago, and he has, he has been exceptional as an Assistant Manager, and I think in particular, the park, the recreation, the open space, the trails. That's not all Steve does. It's what he spends a lot of his time on, but I think that this community really was in need of those types of resources, and I think we're just now being able to kind of, the tip of the iceberg, I guess I would call it. So Steve and I will be working, as we have for five years or more, working closely together on this transition plan, and I look forward to handing this over, and I know Steve will do an exceptional job as manager. So I'm really anxious to take that next step here. I would caution to say that we're not done yet. I've got a few more months left, so I'm looking forward. A lot of people have asked me, well, why don't you just coast the last, whatever, few months or whatever? That's just not me. And we'll be working full-time for the township in 2023, at least in part, and so I'll be looking forward to helping the township accomplish some of the things that have not been finished yet. So we've got more work to do, but I think we're leaving the township in a good spot. So I just want to thank everyone. This was not expected. I'm thinking we'll probably do this sometime later next year, but I appreciate all the accolades and glad I was able to earn your respect and trust. So, thank you.
Again, thank you, John. You know, as we went through this, as I've learned over the six years that I've been doing this, is that this world of municipality provisions and laws and guidelines is more complex than you can imagine, and, you know, you've helped guide us, given us a lot of direction, a lot of experience. You've helped me a lot along the way, and we think that this six-month period will allow for a smooth transition to occur, and we have a very affluent and talented person waiting on the wings, in Steve Brown. The whole staff is very talented. So, thank you. Moving on, our Route 30 Quarter. This is an update on the RACE grant application that we began in February of this year. Just want to give you an update on where we are. Thursday, tomorrow, the RACE Grant Committee will resume its activities as we embark on the 2023 $30 million grant application for road improvement on Route 30. That'll be the Delta Consulting Group that we've been working with, John, myself, and Deb Abel, who's head of the Planning Commission. We'll be putting together everything and beginning, going forward on that process. We're also utilizing part of the $3 million that we had been awarded by the government for engineering work to begin shortly. I guess we're doing engineering studies at this point in time. So we're looking forward to hitting a home run next year on the RACE grant with John's help. Any other thoughts?
Just a couple of bullet points. The application this year is due the end of February, so it's earlier than it was initially, and we are, we were already polishing up, with some of the staff's help, we're polishing up all the letters of support, the boilerplate letters to go out, and we're planning a trip sometime early next year to Washington to meet all the key legislators that will be involved in possibly supporting the project.
All right. I'll add one more point. We met with our new congressperson, Katie Muth, and she is very strong against, very strong, supporting this project and has indicated she will back us in many different avenues, and I think she's a real go-getter. I think she'll help us in this process as well. Next, I'll give it back to John on the sewer sale.
Not a whole lot new. We're still in about a 12 to 18-month holding pattern. The Commonwealth Court sets their own docket, so our guess is it's going to be between a year and a year and a half. There are some, there's some work done by both parties, or all parties to the appeal, and so we're supporting the legal team that's pursuing that. So more to come as the year progresses in '23.
Campus Master Plan, Jerry Gorsky?
Campus Master Plan is kind of on hold. We are, because of the sewer sale, the police station project continues to move in a smart way, but we're not yet spending serious money until we know more about the proceeds from the sale. We have the proceeds, we just can't spend them until the appeal is cured. But in the meantime, we are looking at some improvements to, minor improvements to this building as it continues to age, so we'll be coming back to the Board sometime in '23 with those recommendations. That's all I have, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to turn the mic over to Chief Jaeger and Chief Lewis pertaining to some police and fire and EMS accommodations that occurred last, in the last couple of weeks.
I'll go first since he has a longer version, and some of this, it was a joint effort on the one that I'm talking about. So in mid-November, there was an ambulance call for an elderly resident in their 90s, and we got a letter from a relative who was there, and the person had fallen and, you know, was down for a while, and the ambulance and the police responded, and they were having a hard time finding someone to, a relative, to take control of the situation and get everything where it's supposed to be, and I'm trying not to give out too many details because it's private. But ultimately, the officer and Chief Lewis's ambulance crew stayed with the person and worked to get help and for several hours. So this person wrote us and said, "East Whiteland is blessed to have Officer Wolf, who's a police officer, looking after our residents. Some of the best police work is the day-to-day assurance that they are there for us when we need them. We're very grateful to Officer Wolf." So I just wanted to thank him and Brian Rachko and Greg Hanteco.
Thanks, Chief. I received two letters about the same incident in regards to full-time Department of Fire and Emergency Services personnel, Brian Rachko and Cody Gable, and I'll read both letters to you. "I'm writing to thank ambulance crew member Brian Rachko for his care of my aunt a few days ago. She fell and hit her head and had crawled to the living room. While Cody was inside helping my aunt, Brian helped me to calm down. It has been a difficult two years with her declining health, and I was pretty panicked. Brian made the first contact to her son by phone. He also worked with Cody to try and patiently convince my aunt to get checked out because she nearly had hit her head. They had to repeat things over and over again. Over the next two hours, Brian worked with Officer Wolf to call the son two more times. He agreed to make the trip to Malvern. Brian also spoke with a doctor, and both he and Cody tried everything to convince my aunt to go. Her son said no to the hospital, too. Brian and Cody calmly worked with my aunt to get off the floor and onto the couch. By the time I was signing papers, she was up on her walker, wanting to know what we were doing. I know they are a busy crew, but they never rushed my aunt. It was amazing. Brian and Cody are wonderful assets to East Whiteland. We are blessed to have them. Please convey our thanks for all they did for my aunt. I'm writing to thank ambulance crew member Cody Gable for his care of my aunt recently. She is 94 and fell and hit her head. She was on the floor and very upset. Cody was so kind and patient with her. She could not understand his questions because of her memory problems and confusion. He took the time to listen to her and acknowledge what she was saying to help calm her down. She refused transport, but both Cody and Brian knew she really did not understand what had happened to her. Cody adjusted his conversation to her words for nearly two hours. While we were not successful in getting her to agree to go, Cody and Brian were able to assist her to sit on the couch. By the time we were doing the paperwork, she had gotten up on her walker and came over to see what we were up to. I want to thank Cody for his care and compassion. East Whiteland is blessed to have both Cody and Brian to help our residents through the scary times. Both Brian Rachko and Cody Gable are in this room, and from my standpoint, your actions that day exemplify what we try to do to every member in the community that we see, and I'm extremely proud. Thank you so much."
Certainly on behalf of the Board and, I guess, the residents, thank you all for everything you could do. Next, we need to, I guess, approve a reorg meeting, which is going to be held on the traditional first day in January, January 3.
traditional first day in January, January 3 of this 2023 at 5:00. Do we actually need to make a motion for that?
Yeah, I think, part of the motion should be, normally we have it Zoom. That reorg will not be via Zoom, is, is my understanding.
That's our practice.
That's correct.
Yeah. Make a motion?
Sure. Make a motion to approve and schedule the reorganization meeting Tuesday, January 3, 2023, already, at 5:00 p.m.
Have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And passes. As we move forward into the winter months, Chris Jaeger, if you can re, give us a public information?
Yeah. I don't know how many people in the room have ever heard of Christine's Law, but it's, but it's called Christine's Law. It's to protect motors from snow and ice, signed by the governor's Act 90 of 2022. Ironically, it was signed over the summer, when nobody really thinks about it, but Christine's Law was based on a, a mother who was driving down the road after a snowstorm in 2005 on Christmas Day, and a truck went by and there was a large sheet of ice on the top, and it went, slid off and went through her windshield and ultimately took her life. So, this Act 90 has been changed now, which makes it illegal to drive with ice with penalties attached. As before, it's illegal to drive with ice on, but we really couldn't stop people for it. So, now, this has strengthened the bill a lot. And ultimately, it's, it's more about calling attention to, paying attention to what, what's on your car and, you know, even for pickup trucks, anything can fly off and go through somebody's window. So, I just wanted to call attention to that Christine's Law. And while we're on that topic and the weather forecast for tomorrow, you know, it sounds like it's our first brief taste of winter, hopefully. But I just want to remind people that on our website, under the links, if you go to open all, you'll see an invitation to sign up for Ready Chesko. And what that does is that gives us the opportunity, or you the opportunity, to sign up for any type of notifications. So, when we say that we're going to plow snow, instead of people getting their cars towed or the snowplows having to go around them, you can sign up and get a text or email, whatever you want, and it will tell you, "We're going to be plowing snow in X number of minutes." And I recommend everybody get that so they, they know. It's kind of a complicated process, but ultimately, you can figure out if you really have a problem, you can call one of my assistants in the office tomorrow or whenever, and they'll be able to walk you through the process. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. I was just in upstate New York over the weekend where I was in, filed with five inches of snow, and I was amazed at how many cars driving south on the New York State thruway actually had their cars cleaned off with snow. But, next, Steve Brown and Greg. Do we have some appointments, promotions?
Thank you all again. Recently in our department, we had two vacancies. One was a fire captain's position and one was an acting captain's position. So, we had a promotional written test followed by an assessment that was proctored by a third-party assessment panel. After that, all the candidates were ranked, and I'm here tonight to share with you the appointments to these positions. First of all, congratulations to firefighter Brian Ratchko for his promotion to fire captain. I'm going to read a brief bio about Brian. Brian brings with him over 27 years' experience in the fire service. His career began as a teenager as a volunteer. Over the years, Brian has been dedicated to the fire service and has held multiple ranks, including lieutenant, acting captain, captain, and chief throughout various fire departments in Pennsylvania and Maryland. Most recently, Ratchko ended a 10-year quad commitment as a security manager, classified asset protection manager, crisis management, and fire chief for Lockheed Martin, formerly located in Coatesville. Brian has been with East Whiteland Township for the past seven and a half years, where he was appointed acting captain in April of 2022. Brian is a proud member of the first responder community and proudly brings with him years of corporate experience and a true passion for firefighting. In his spare time, Brian enjoys flying helicopters and airplanes, playing hockey, and spending time with his two very small Great Danes. So, joining Brian here tonight is his father, Robert, mother Maureen. So, if I can ask Captain Ratchko to come up along with his mother Maureen so she can pin his badge. Brian will begin in his captain role just after the 1st of January 2023, and he is assigned the captain's position on the B platoon. Our other appointment is for Jacob Bailey to acting captain. Jake, if you want to come up. Just so everybody knows, what the acting captain position is, is in the event the captain is not at work that day on vacation or various other reasons, we always have an acting person that fills in that spot when they're not there. A short bio about Jake. Jake started his fire service career in 2006 as a volunteer with the Honeybrook Fire Company. He worked his way up through the ranks to the position of fire chief in 2019. He currently holds a position of captain with the Honeybrook Fire Company. During his time as a volunteer, he was hired by the Anarundel County Fire Department in Maryland in 2019, where he worked until he was hired full-time with East Whiteland Township. Jake is excited to see what the future holds in East Whiteland Township and looks forward to working in that progressive fire department. Jake is joined tonight by his wife. Thank you.
As is customary to the end of the year, we need to approve our 2023 final budget. Bousha, if you can give us some oversight or some thoughts?
Can you go to?
I defer to, she was well prepared.
Good evening, everyone. Today, I'm presenting our 2023 final budget. To do so, I just have to go to two slides. It will be very brief. To do so, I have to go to only two slides, Scott. It's very brief change. We, a very small change we had made, so.
Only two?
Yeah, very small. Yeah. So, I'm going to go to number five, slide number five, Jack. Keep going. One more. You went up. Slide five is there. Okay, I can just cover that without looking at, because I know the number. Up, up. Initiation. Oh, yeah, this is it. So, since we met last, last time we met on November 9, since then, we had a very small change in our expenditure, total $6,000. So, we, we had a $6,000 of saving, reduction in expenditure, and that is reflected in our final slide, Jack, number 10. So, our, the final slide, number 10, keep going. Yeah. So, our net surplus is $1,117,530. That is $6,000 more than last time we presented you the number. So, in total, it was $6,000 reduction in expense. That includes our, increased our surplus by that amount. So, that's the only change we had.
So, we're going to be in business next year?
Yes.
Good to hear. Any questions from anyone?
Any question? And we will be posting all this for public on the website. It will go about 50 pages or so of detail.
We eventually post the full budget, right?
Oh, yes, everything. You don't want to hear the whole thing, right? So, I just kept it as small.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the 2023 final budget.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes.
Thank you.
John, I'm not sure why we have to talk about this, but.
I believe we have to pass a resolution to restate the tax rates for '23.
Every year?
Yes.
Even without a change?
Even without a change.
Okay.
Make a motion?
Sure.
I'd like, excuse me, I'd like to make a motion to approve the unchanged tax rate, 2023 tax rates for East Whiteland Township.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
For those that are not familiar with it, that's three-quarters of 1%.
That's the earned income tax, but it's also the same for the real estate tax, Millidge, right? Change, no change in any tax rate.
No change in any tax rate whatsoever.
Next, we've got the budget for the Volunteer Fire Department.
Mr. Chairman, I believe Gary McCusker, who is the president of the Volunteer Fire Company, is on Zoom to give a summary of the '23 budget for the Volunteer Fire Company.
Hi, can you be joined in here, Gary?
Yeah, Gary, we can.
Okay, great, thanks. Yeah, I don't know if I sent this slide over. I'm sure that's what we'll be discussing on.
There we go.
So, there's a lot of detail that we will put a great, great link on. Our budget for 2022 was $1,015,767. Our estimated budget for 2023 is $1,018,774. So, we've got a very small increase in our budget, $3,000. We're looking to make sure we keep the costs very low on this. Our expected income, I don't know if the second slide is available? Actually, it's the second set, not the line on video.
PowerPoint.
There we go. Yes, slide please. So, the majority of the expenses, these are just general categories into the cost numbers. I won't read through those all. I will make a couple notes that, you know, inflation, other items, is driving a lot of fuel costs up. Fuel costs were 25% higher than expected this year, so we're going to estimate that out for 2023. Station, while it seems very new, it's seven years old. We'll make this cost on the station start to increase, so we're spending a little bit of money there. Other services and fees are spending pretty big since years past. And as I mentioned, the station, as it is seven years old, we're looking to make a few improvements to some of the furniture, structures on appliances and kitchens this year as well. We've also started a program. We're allocating money to the capital reserve fund, so we can build monies to make available when we have to do major repairs or our license. So, we'll make our first major contribution this summer year to that fund. The graph on the right just shows by percentage where we, where we usually earn income from. So, a significant portion of those companies come from Township. Majority of our funding gets come from the bill services, whether it's our contract with Turnpike or revenue earned through insurance reimbursement for EMS calls. And then if you go to the next slide, I was told a brief summary of some of the significant activities of the year, just kind of about our services. A big year for us, we did add a third ambulance to our fleet. It's called Ambulance 53. It went into service in late October, and it's been running a significant number of calls. On the career side, we did increase from three full-time firefighter entities per shift to four. The increase allows us to staff two ambulances, so we're seeing a significant number of calls being addressed by that larger crew. We also paid off the mortgage on the fire station at the end of the year, so that was a significant accomplishment for us financially. We've got a number of new members joining, including five, the Department of Children's Program. So, our pipeline at the high school continues to be strong. And the first time in a year due to COVID, we had a crash there. That was back in October with record number vendors, and we've had a variety of other events at the station that we've been happy to host and have people back on site for. Another big accomplishment, this was an activity after Hurricane Iowa. We wanted to get stronger and better and our water rescue capabilities. So, we refreshed our water rescue gear and had a number of members attend water rescue training and certified in those areas. And if you go to the next slide, please. We do continue to see a record number of calls. Year after year, the calls are increasing. We've had 1,882 calls state. That's 200 calls more than this time last year, which is several weeks to go. As you probably aware, most of our calls are related, almost three-quarters of them. And one thing we're starting to see is a significant increase in overlapping emergencies. So, I'm sure she could look at some progress on this, but we're seeing a lot more where emergency call comes in, and while that call is still active and being responded to, we'll get a second call for emergency. Again, increase, an increase in staffing is helping us to address those along with the support of the volunteer organization. So, that is the last slide I have. Paul, any questions you may have?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to recognize Gary McCusker. This is his first year as the president of Volunteer Fire Company. He's done an exceptional job in the professionalism that he runs the department in, as well as, as you can see with his, the budget presentation. He just, he's always hitting the mark on, on things that he does, and it's, I think, the volunteer association's in good hands.
Thank you, Gary. Thank you, Gary. Do you like to make a motion?
Sure. Since I'm privileged to be the treasurer.
You are.
Of the fire company, I guess that's the appropriate word. I'll make a motion to approve the 2023 budget for the East Whiteland Township Volunteer Fire Association.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and passes. As we embark upon January 1st and the festivities of fireworks, we have a new fire ordinance.
New fireworks ordinance.
Fireworks.
Yes, just briefly, this is a general ordinance of the townships, and no public hearing is required, public meeting. I have marked a series of exhibits. B1 is the December 6, 2022 email letter to the Daily Local. B2 is the proof of publication on December 7. B3 is the ordinance, and B4 is the legal notice. And the ordinance is, an ordinance amending the East Whiteland Township Code, Article 3, titled Fireworks, of Chapter 133, titled Peace and Good Order, for the purposes of amending regulations for the use of consumer and display fireworks within East Whiteland Township. The ordinance sets forth regulations for display fireworks and regulates the location and time for the use of consumer fireworks, including the prohibition of the use of consumer fireworks between the hours of 10:00 p.m. and 10:00 a.m., except on July 2nd, 3rd, and 4th, and December 31st, when consumer fireworks may be used until 1:00 a.m. the following day. When July 4th falls on a Tuesday, or Wednesday, or Thursday, consumer fireworks may be used until 1:00 a.m. on the immediately preceding and following Friday and Saturday. This is the exact wording from this, from the legislation, which is a little confusing, but you're giving, they're giving you a little more time for certain holidays. The hours of use of consumer fireworks is not restricted on the Monday of Memorial Day and the immediately preceding Saturday and Sunday. And there's a permit if you're going to do display fireworks, but mostly we wanted to put out into the audience, and it will be, Brittany is going to put it on the website also, is about the use of consumer fireworks. Mostly that they shouldn't be used between the hours of 10:00 p.m. and 10:00 a.m., except for those few exceptions.
For those that break the ordinance, what are some of the fines associated with it?
Yeah, the legislature set forth certain fines if you're going to violate certain sections of the ordinance, and that is also set forth. We updated ours to match with the legislation states. So it's punishable up to a fine of not more than $500 using consumer fireworks in violation of the ordinance. And we, I'm expecting that the use of consumer fireworks happens more in the township than the use of display, which are pretty limited.
Okay. Any questions? Donna, anyone in the audience, questions?
No.
Peter, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the amended Act 74 PA fireworks ordinance.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and passes. Moving on to the public hearing, I will turn over to Bernadette, the Chester Valley Golf Club.
Yes, this is a conditional use hearing, so this is a public hearing. I'm going to read the public notice, and I did see, Mr. Brosman is present for the applicant, and... So notice is hereby given that on December 14, 2022, at 7:00 p.m. at the East Whiteland Township Municipal Building, the Board of Supervisors shall hold a public hearing on and may take action to vote upon the conditional use application of Chester Valley Golf Club. The applicant is requesting a conditional use pursuant to Code Section 200-19 to construct a six-hole short course on UPI number 42-3-199, which has extensive frontage on Sweetsford Road and Church Road. The short course is proposed to be located in the southwest corner of the property. And I'm going to mark a series of exhibits, which have also been provided to Mr. Brosman, the applicant's attorney. Ready?
Yeah.
Exhibit one is going to be the September 22, 2022, letter to the Township Planning Commission with application for conditional use. Exhibit two is the deed for the property. Exhibit three is the proposed plans prepared by Site Engineering Concepts LLC, dated February 1, 2022. Exhibit four is the October 19, 2022, letter from George W. Brosman Esquire, granting extension through 12/30/2022 to hold this hearing. Exhibit five is the November 10, 2022, letter from George Brosman, providing an amended conditional use plans. Exhibit tab six is amended plans prepared by Site Engineering Concepts LLC, dated February 1, 2022, last revised October 31, 2022. Exhibit tab seven is the November 23, 2022, letter from David S. Kavanaugh, RLA, ASLA, from Land Concepts. Exhibit tab eight is two aerials of the proposed short course. Exhibit tab 10 is a certificate of mailing and list of neighbors who received notice of the conditional use hearing this evening. Exhibit tab 11 is the affidavit of posting with posting photos of the property in reference to this conditional use hearing. And exhibit tab 12 is the proof of publication for November 30th and December 7th for tonight's hearing. And I believe Mr. Brosman also has a series of exhibits that he's likely going to mark also.
That's correct. Shall I proceed?
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is George Brosman. I'm an attorney representing the Chester Valley Golf Club with respect to this conditional use application. I just wanted to introduce some of the people that are with me. Not all of them will be witnesses, but Ed Ellis will be coming up. He's the club president. He is going to testify. John Davy is a board member. He's available for questions if we need him. I wasn't going to call him as a witness. Rob Lambert is the civil engineer for the project. By way of introduction, if I may, the Chester Valley Golf Club has been here in East Whiteland Township for about 100 years, since the 1920s. According to information that we have, the golf has been played on the golf course that is the subject of this application since approximately 1929, give or take a year. Over the years, the properties that surround the club have been more intensely developed, but the club, by virtue of its golf course and other facilities, has essentially remained as a large, open, green space encompassing in total about 175 acres. After the club began at the property, the township zoning ordinance was later adopted. Right now, the club's land is zoned R1 residential district by the current zoning map of the township. Under the regulations for the R1 district, a golf course is specifically permitted use by conditional use. Other uses are also allowed in the R1 district, including housing developments. The club is currently, is constantly taking steps to serve the needs of its members and to provide for its continued vitality. These steps often include physical improvements to its facilities. The club is here this evening for such a project. In particular, as was mentioned, the club is proposing a six-hole short course practice area improvement to the existing golf course. You'll hear testimony that the part of the club property where this six-hole improvement is being made is an area where there were golf holes in the past. Before appearing at this hearing, the club met with the township, reached out to adjacent neighbors in the area of the proposed short course improvement. You'll hear, and you'll even see, a further revised plan that the club has made modifications to the plan for this improvement based on the comments received. These changes have included modifying the plans to shift two of the golf holes further away from the adjoining properties, and adding supplemental landscaping along the property lines. The club has also met with township representatives, including providing a tour of the area in question. Unless there are questions from me, I would like to call our first witness, the club president, Ed Ellis.
Go ahead.
And, well, Ed is coming up. I think Zach is going to be kind enough to put up on the screen some of our exhibits, but I have some hard copies I'll hand out.
Yes, I will. Thank you. Bernadette, have you already got?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
I do?
Can everyone hear us? I'm not sure if I'm getting the mic well enough. So Ed, are you a member of the Chester Valley Golf Club?
I am.
Are you the current board president of the golf club?
I am the...
How long have you been associated in one way or another with the golf club?
Well, I've been a member of the club since 1990. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I, I, I was a, I've been a member since 1990. I was a kid. My father was a member there, and back in the early 1960s, before they changed the course, I was actually a caddy. So I was associated with it back then. My father left and...
So we picked the right man. He's got a lot of experience here. Ed, in the exhibit package, I mentioned in my opening remarks about how long the, the club has been at the property. Is this just an excerpt that we took off the, the website of the golf club?
Exhibit, exhibit one, yes.
And does this indicate that golf has been played on the property since 1929?
Yes, it does.
And based on your experience, can you describe some of the changes that have been made to the golf course over the years?
Originally, the golf course was entirely on the south side of Sweetsford Road. In mid-'60s, the government decided to put Route 202 through the back nine, so the club acquired some more property and, and basically completely rearranged the holes on both sides of Sweetsford Road. So it is what it looks like. That was, that new course opened in 1968. There were further changes in 2009 when we redid all the greens. We changed a couple holes around a little bit, not, not significant.
And not to go into everything, but just as a, by way of example, the club has been a host to some prestigious events over the years. Is that correct?
The, the club has hosted the, or had hosted the Bell Atlantic Classic, which is a senior tour, the Bell Atlantic Classic, which was a senior tour event back in the, back in the 90s. Is that easier? Yeah, sorry. I should have figured that out by now. Yeah. We, we hosted the Bell Atlantic Golf Classic back in the 80s and 90s. I think there were a total of 12 of them, not all in consecutive years. We had people like Arnold Palmer, and Jack Nicholas, and Chichi Rodriguez, who holds the course record for a round. He shot one year in the tournament. So, yes.
Thanks. I'll try to speak up. You could hold the mic. Zach, maybe you could put up exhibit A2, and this is in the package. Is this a Chester County view of the parcels that the club currently owns? They're highlighted in red.
Yes, sir, it is.
And moving on to the next, next exhibit, A3, is this an aerial image that shows the Chester Valley Golf Club parcels, as well as the surrounding area?
Yes, it does.
And briefly, what is the golf club proposing to do with the property with this application?
Well, what we're attempting to do is to take a piece of the property that has been unused for the last 50 years or so. It's overgrown, it's, it's full of brush and live and dead trees and that sort of thing, and turn it into a short, what you might have called years ago a pitch and putt course. It would have six holes on it. The shortest hole would be about 50 yards, the longest would be about 125 yards. And, and use that area up in the, I guess it's the southwest corner of the property. And yes, if, yep, that's it, right where, right where Zach has the hand. And, and the idea would be to provide a recreational area for beginners in the game, for older people. I'm trying my best not to get older, but I'm going to be in that category shortly, I think. And for people to just relax and, you know, hit a few balls around and, and sharpen their game. There's also a, a short game improvement area in the very corner of that property, which would be for putting and chip shots and that sort of thing.
For the record, I don't know if I said this, but the, the club is a private club, is that correct?
Yeah, this is a private club. It's, it's, you have to be a member to play or be the guest of a member.
That would apply to the short course as well?
Correct.
And practically speaking, how will members, you know, physically get to this short course area?
Well, if you look at the parking lot and clubhouse area on Sweetsford Road, the members to get to the short course would either, they could walk, or they could take a cart up through the middle of the course. And the plan is to put a, a cart, identify a piece of that ground as a cart parking area, which is right now behind the eighth green, which, I'm not sure if that does you folks any good, but it's the, it's the northeast corner of the property, which is on the southwest corner of the Chester Valley property. So it's the northeast corner of the, of the area we propose to improve.
Now, is this project expected to result in an increase in membership for the club and, or increase the need for parking, or change the traffic patterns at the club?
We, we don't expect this to change the membership. It's simply improving the membership experience with what we have.
Moving on to exhibit A4, Zach, is this just a close-up of the area, is the area for the short course labeled?
Yeah, it's got the yellow piece, the yellow pieces where we proposed to put the six short holes.
And this area in question was previously improved with golf holes as part of the course?
Yes. Actually, what I remember from when I was a caddy is that that area had holes on it. It had the part of the 16th, the original 16th hole from back in the original design. It also had the entire 17th hole, which was a par three running from left to right, as you look at the, as you look at the, at the photograph. And then it had part of the 11th hole, which ran through the other, the upper right-hand corner of it. It's kind of interesting. Back then, the course was actually designed to play across the wires, but the current course doesn't, and the short course would play parallel to the wires, not into the wires. But back then, it was played into the wires, believe it or not.
So with this aerial here and the other one we saw, you know, we can see there's some development around the, around the club. To your, to the best of your knowledge, is it fair to say that many of the surrounding land uses developed more intensely around the club over the years?
I think there's more building everywhere, and certainly would appear to be around here.
And if we could move on to exhibit A5, which is a series of four historical photographs, is this development pattern evident when looking at these old photographs? And we could just identify these quickly. We have, we'll call this A5A. This is from 1951. I think this is a poor quality, because I think this is a photograph that hangs at the club, and we took a picture of a picture. And then if we could go to A5B, the next slide, this is 1959, is that right?
Yep.
And A5C, 1965, and A5D, 1971. And here you can see, we now have Route 202 in the picture. And here you can see we now have Route 202 in the picture.
Yeah, these are- these are photographs. We have some of these in our archives, which are otherwise known as brown boxes in the attic. We have a lot of pictures of what it used to look like. You can see, actually, in one of those pictures what the original layout of the course was before we expanded north of Sweetsford Road.
So moving on to a different topic. Based on your experience, will the proposed short course cause any detrimental impact adjoining properties or other properties in the general- or to the general public health, safety, or welfare that would not be associated with typical golf?
I would not expect so. I mean, this is not as extensive a use of the property as a typical golf course would be because it's just really short golf shots. It's not somebody taking out a driver and hitting it 300 yards. There's a very limited- very short holes.
Now, before we came here tonight, as I mentioned in my opening, had you confirmed, did the club reach out to the owners of the properties that are adjacent to this portion of the golf course?
The club sent letters to all the neighbors. I don't know exactly how many there are, but anyone whose property adjoined the club. We were contacted by one neighbor initially, Mr. and Mrs. Lorni. We had them over, had a discussion with them. I believe we satisfied their concerns. We were later contacted by Mr. and Mrs. Gillespie and had conversations with them, and I believe we satisfied them as well. We had further contact. I guess it was through the township and spoke to Mr. Alex DePaula this morning. He was concerned about golf balls coming into his yard. We discussed that with him. We talked about moving the one green that he was concerned about a little bit further away from the boundary of the course. We also talked about plantings, which we plan to do in places where there aren't trees now. I will say that the hole that he's concerned about has a very large stand of trees between the tee and his yard. I suspect it would be very difficult for balls to get through that to get to his yard. It just doesn't seem very possible to me.
So what you have identified is Hole 1? That Hole 1?
No, it's Hole 3. So it's the one on the-
Oh, okay.
-southern-
Yeah.
The bottom.
Are the tree- are the trees that you're talking about, the wooded area of the small two-, three-inch caliber trees?
No, that's the wooded area along Hole Number 2, I believe.
Two.
Number 3 has- if you could put that-
Zach, would you mind tipping ahead to Exhibit 89?
There you go. If you look at the- See where the number 3 is? There's a bulge below that, directly below it. Right there. Yeah, no, no. Alex, yeah, a little bit to your left? Here. It's- yeah, right there. Right there. That says thick brush. That's the area I'm referring to. It's brush, and it's also got a lot of trees.
And for the record, that's Exhibit 89, which we're going to introduce as our third revised plan. And that is the third sheet of that proposed plan. You can hold on to that. So, long story short, you tried to- Based on your decision, based on the feedback you got from the neighbors, is that correct?
We have, correct, yes.
And did you also- I do not have that involved, but for the record, did the club attend a development committee meeting with some of the township people?
We did, yes.
And I mentioned, can you confirm that four of the site was offered for some of the township representative?
Yes, we had Mr. Lambert, Deborah Abel, I believe it is, from the planning commission, and we had Zach Partner.
Did you also review these plans with the East Whiteland Township Planning Commission recently?
There was- we were- we attended a planning commission hearing last week or two weeks ago on the subject, yes.
Did they recommend approval of the conditional use application?
They did, yes.
All I have for Ed at this time. We have Rob Lambert, the engineer, who will go over the plans and some of the other things in your ordinance. Ed, they may have questions. I guess let me ask-
What's your handicap?
My index rate.
Because that directly affects your credibility, really.
My index rate now is 10.
Okay, all right, good enough.
It's been higher, it's been lower, so.
He drives a mean cart, too.
So no other questions for Ed? Should we move on to Rob?
I do.
Rob, in the exhibit package, I believe it's at A7, is this a copy of your educational and professional background summary?
Yes, it is.
And could you briefly describe your background?
Yes, I have a Bachelor of Science of Civil Engineering from the University of Notre Dame and a Master of Science in Civil Engineering from Villanova University.
Are you a licensed engineer in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania?
I am, yes.
I'd like to offer Rob as an expert in civil engineering. Rob, are you generally familiar with the Chester Valley Golf Club property and the surrounding area?
Yes, I am.
And were the plans for this application that are submitted as part of the conditional use application prepared by your firm?
Yes, that's Exhibit A9.
And maybe we could flip back to- do you want to use A3, the aerial?
If you can go to A8.
If we could go to Exhibit A8. This is a blow-up of the area in question. Can you generally describe existing and proposed conditions?
Yes, so I'll use A8 and A9. This is the aerial. I think Ed went over the surrounding area. The area of the proposed short course is in yellow. Up to the upper right of this page, you can see the existing golf holes. There's a brownish area going left to right, and that's the high tension lines that go back and forth through the property. So that goes through kind of the top area of the short course. So if we go to Exhibit A9, skip over Sheet 1. That's really just an aerial showing it. Sheet 2, that's really just showing the existing conditions. You can see some existing trees on it. And then the lines on it are actually the contour lines showing the grades on the property. And then Sheet 3 of A9 shows the proposed layout. So each one of the numbers represents really just the hole. As Ed mentioned, the holes range from 50 to 125 yards. You will have a area- a tee area. Not sure it's going to be as formal as a tee, but a area to start and shoot toward the greens. The tan areas are sand traps. And then you can see the green areas with the green and a representative flag on it. There is a gray line, and it looks like a line at the scale that goes around the perimeter. And that's really just a walking area. So if you went up there with your kids and somebody wasn't playing golf, you could kind of walk around and monitor what they were doing, but have something to do while you were there.
And Rob, you heard us talking about the neighbor meeting. I think you attended one of them and were on a Zoom call this morning. Alex DePaula, is that correct?
That is correct.
This plan here, this now bears a revision date. Revision Number 3 bearing today's date. Is this the revised plan that has been prepared to add the topics that we discussed with Mr. DePaula?
Yes, it has.
And can you highlight the changes that were made, as well as the earlier changes that were made regarding the other hole for the neighbors on the other property line?
So I'll start chronologically. So we met with- had a neighbor meeting and neighbor husband and wife showed up to the meeting, had some questions, and they're adjacent to the green of Hole Number 2. And as we explained the project to them, they had a concern about the location of the hole and some concerns about some buffering. We moved Hole Number 2 further away from the property line, and we added a series of trees and shrubs along that property line, which are now shown on this plan. And then today, we had a- actually, a call this morning to talk about Ron Hole Number 3. Again, the plan that was previously submitted, the green for Number 3 was closer to the property line. We shifted that further away from the property line and added the similar screening that we did along the western side, to the left side, to the south side along the property line.
And we had also received, had we not, and I think it was listed in the exhibits that the solicitor put forward, there was a review letter from David Cavanaugh, who's the township's landscape plan reviewer. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And as I recall, he didn't have a lot of comments, but were his comments taken into account with this plan revision?
Yes, one of his main comments was adding additional diversity of plants, species, and so we've added those to the plan.
In the buffer areas?
That is correct.
So moving on to some other topics, just for the record, is there any lighting proposed for these holes?
No.
Mr. Ellis touched on this when he went over how people would get access to the area practically, but can you confirm that there will be no permanent access to this area from the adjoining properties that are owned by the club?
That is correct. They will access it from- really go to the same touch point they do now, is the clubhouse area, and be able to either walk or take a cart up to the short course area.
Can I interrupt one second? Just one question while you're on that topic. How will people's carts get to the practice green?
Through the existing cart paths that exist through the property. And then you would park your cart in the vicinity of Hole Number 1.
Well, the practice green is the other end of the property.
Oh, I thought you meant the whole area. The practice green itself?
Yeah, in the south west corner.
They'll have to walk across. They'll be, again, be using the existing cart path. We do not propose any additional cart paths, so they'd stop there and then walk across.
Will people be able to park carts down in that area around?
It is not the intent to park around the lower left corner of that.
All right.
So, Rob, even before the modification that you had described involving shifting Hole 2 and Hole 3 further away from the property lines, has the configuration of the short course holes, have they already been designed in accordance with applicable standards to reduce the chance for errant golf balls leaving the property?
Yes, the golf course designer, Jim Nagel, took that into consideration, looking at ball angles coming off of tee boxes and not only going off property, but also interfering with other holes. Not only going off property, but also the interference with other holes. So it's looking at both the internal and the external.
So that was already taken into account, but is it fair to say that by making the modifications, moving the two holes, did that only improve the design in this regard?
Yes.
Generally speaking, in your opinion, do you believe the proposed project will injure or detract from the use of neighboring properties or from the character of the neighborhood?
No, I do not.
Are you generally familiar with the East Whiteland Township zoning ordinance provisions that are applicable to conditional use applications?
I am.
A lot of ordinances, when they allow a conditional use, they will have specific standards for that use. Are there any specific conditional use standards in the ordinance for a golf course in the R1 district?
No.
The code provides that conditional use applications are also subject to general criteria, and they utilize the criteria for special exceptions, which we know are very similar legally to conditional uses. They refer to Sections 200-115.E and F, is that correct?
Yes, they do.
Are you generally familiar with those code provisions? Is it fair to say that these general criteria relate to general public interest matters?
They do.
Is it fair to say that most of those general criteria would not relate to the proposed short course?
That's correct.
Without having you go through each of the general provisions individually, are you- did you review them as they might apply to the proposed short course?
Yes, I did.
In your professional opinion, is the proposed short course consistent and in compliance with the general provisions of these code provisions?
Yes, it is.
If the board had any questions about any of them, we would- happy to go over them.
Rob, for the record, you and I are not related, correct?
That is correct.
That's all I have for Lambert- for Rob Lambert at this time.
Did you consider the need for netting on the other side of the first green? The only- the only- any netting on the opposite side, the far side of the first green? I don't- you'd have to really hit it and overshoot it. I think their house might be pretty close to that. I wouldn't put it condition now, but if it presents a problem in the future, you should-
I'm sure the club will-
Consider that, yes. Right? Yeah. Yeah, so that's- that's a possibility for the future. But I don't see it as a problem for Hole Number 2. You ought to have a pretty bad slice. And if you're a 10 handicap, you don't have a slice. That's all I have.
That's all we have at the moment. I would like to reserve the right to sum up after there's any public comment or any further questions.
I don't have any.
No?
Did the board have any further questions?
No.
I have no questions.
There's nothing?
George, I'd like to say that on behalf of the board, I appreciate the timely sharing of information to the board, to Zach, to the planning commission, and also for allowing us to visit the property. For me, that was a big, big help. And I think it's a plus that you folks reached out as strongly as you did, contacted the residents to get their feedback and make the adjustments. So I just want to point those things out. Those are positive from my standpoint.
Yeah, thank you. And you could thank Ed and John and the rest of the club. You know, they- as I said, they've been a member of the community here for almost 100 years, so it's important to them to be a part of the community and to be a good neighbor.
Did anybody in the audience have any questions or comments? Certainly.
So I'm the guy that lives on Hole Number 3.
Yep.
Alex DePaula. D-E-P-A-U-L-A. I have a couple of quick questions. So I'm the guy that lives at 37 Kaufman, at Hole Number 3. Yeah, over there. And so I did have a very nice meeting with them today. They were going to move 3 up a little bit and put some vegetation in, just in case a ball doesn't hit my house. What's it going to be between the tee and the green on 3? Like, what's there? I mean, it's a chip and putt, right? So you're hitting it and it's going to land on the- So you're hitting it and it's going to land on the green. Right. So what's, so there's not going to be a fairway, right? What's going to be there?
It'll be a grass fairway. It'll be a moode grass area.
Fairway-like zone?
Yes.
Okay.
He asked a fairway-like zone, and I agreed that yes, it would be a moode fairway-like zone.
Yeah, that's basically my, my question.
So what party status is, is if you disagree with the decision of the board of supervisors this evening, you have the right to appeal to the next level, which is the Chester County Court of Common Pleas. Normally, someone who received a mailing will automatically get party status because you were so close to the property. If you're beyond that, then the board usually asks you questions, and Mr. Brosman has the right to ask you questions and object to your party status. Again, you do not need party status in order to ask questions or make comments on the application, but if you want the right to appeal to the next level, you do need party status, and Mr. Brosman also has the right to cross-examine you at that point. Does anyone in the audience want party status on this conditional use application? Anyone on the, on Zoom, Donna?
No.
Okay, saying none? Was there anyone else in the audience who had any questions or comments? Anyone?
What's the timing?
You have to step up to the microphone because...
What's the timing for all this?
We do, we have to get permitting in place, likely late '24 would be the kind of start, you know, that we'd be complete.
And I do see in the summary from Zach that you are required to obtain an NPDES permit?
Yes, that is correct.
Usual. George, if the board were to grant the conditional use application, some suggested conditions that I would make to the board, as indicated in the testimony, there'll be no lights on the short course that you shall satisfy Mr. David Cavanaugh as to his comments in his letter that he had provided, which I do believe your revised plan may have done, but I'm not sure Mr. Cavanaugh saw it. So just that. And then there are two standard ones. The applicant shall proceed in substantial conformance with the testimony and exhibits presented this evening, and in all other respects, the applicant shall comply with all provisions of the statutes, laws, regulations, rules, codes, and ordinances of the United States, the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, Chester County, East Whiteland Township, and any other municipal entity having jurisdiction over this matter, including obtaining a township erosion control permit.
Those all sound fine to us.
Those are agreeable? Those would be the ones that I would suggest, and the only other one that, Rich, while we were talking, is the netting, if you wanted to put that in.
Right.
You do?
Put some fuzzy language, yeah.
Put some language in for the netting? Okay. I had written down, I'm sorry?
Yeah, if the circumstances warrant that golf balls present a problem on adjacent properties, to respond appropriately, something like that.
Which may include netting, George.
That seems fine. We'll work that out if there's a problem.
With that, based on those conditions, I make a recommendation to approve the conditional use application for Chester Valley Golf.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, good. Hit them straight.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Do I need to ask for my exhibits to be?
They're in, George.
Thank you. Thank you.
Our second favorite time of the night. Salesman Chris, here at, here at the meeting.
Get a format, right?
Oh, my God. You guys are sick. Chris Jaeger, could you tell us about a good old Ford Explorer?
So we have a 2017 Ford Explorer that we put on munisabid. It went through several rounds, and ultimately, we threw it on for one more week, and we got $11,500 bid on it. So that was close enough for us, and we have a bidder, and we propose to sell it to this person next week.
God, it went up $2,000 since Wednesday. Should we wait a week?
Nah, please. I think we should have sold it that night, actually. Now, there's nothing wrong with it. It has 80,000 miles, and you know, it's in good shape. It's just a matter of a timing. It depends on who's looking at it, so we're looking for approval to sell that or to accept that bid.
I would love to, I'd like to make a motion to award the munisabid for the 2017 Ford Explorer.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
John Neal?
Okay, we are asking for permission to rebid the Route 29, Route 30 island beautification project, so, very simple.
My favorite project, you know. I'll make a motion to, to place bids for the 2023 Route 29, Route 30 island beautification project. Second? All in favor?
I'll second it.
Aye. Aye. I'll turn planning and development over to Zach.
Thank you, Scott. First item here under 7A is a consideration of the final resolution for final land development approval for the Knickerbocker redevelopment. We have drafted a resolution that contains a number of sort of standard boilerplate conditions and also some project-specific conditions. Happy to run through any of those if you'd like. A lot of them are related to some of the conversations had during the review of the preliminary plan regarding open space, trails, future access to those areas. There are also some additional conditions related to sewer improvements and the permitting and construction of those improvements. There's some triggers built in relative to the unit, just to allow some additional time for that process to play out, since there would not be a capacity overload until later in the project, until a number of units had already been constructed. So that's the, the general idea there. We also have some conditions relative to the sewer tapping fees, given the current status of the sewer sale. So if there's any questions on the specific conditions or the project in general, I'm happy to answer, and I believe the applicant is here as well.
Conditions substantially similar to the preliminary resolution, right? If not identical?
They are. The majority of them are identical. There were some revisions. We've included language that any additions that are sort of in conflict, where they've been revised by the final, would prevail. And basically, again, some of those are related to sewer, and there's not any drastic ones outside of some of those more third-party permitting and I'll say more administrative-type items. The concepts are all the same.
Okay, I don't have any questions.
And Zach, could you just explain the previously, there's one modified waiver that we also want the...
Yes, thank you for that. There is one modified waiver, which we've noted specifically in the resolution, and basically, this has to do with some of the changes to the access road, service road, multi-use trail, shared lane. It's a sort of a combination paved area at the western end of the tract. We have modified that waiver just to kind of encapsulate that and specifically describe which areas the waiver for a narrower trail are applicable to. And essentially, the idea there is just to spell that out so that there's no confusion over how wide that should be going forward.
A more refined description of the waiver?
Correct.
Okay.
How narrow does it get in that area?
So it generally ranges from four, so it became less of a trail and more of a striped pedestrian area. So bicycles, vehicles, et cetera, could use the paved portion for, again, for either emergency access only or for the adjacent property owner to access their property, and there'd be more of like a striped walkway for pedestrians that ranges from eight feet closer to Mill Lane to four feet, you know, further to the east as you get into the areas where there are some existing and proposed driveways, just to avoid there being, you know, to avoid it being so wide that it would conflict with two-way vehicular movements for people entering and exiting the driveways to those private residences that are adjacent to the service road.
So what happens if two people are riding a bike on a four-foot-wide trail?
So the bikes would...
Who gets knocked off?
I guess whoever's going slower.
Who's bigger?
I would say the, yeah, whoever's bigger. So the idea is that the bicyclists would generally not use the pedestrian walkway. They would use the same area that there would be vehicles. It should be very low volume. Hopefully, it's never used at all, aside from the resident who lives there and the bicyclists and walkers.
Jason, if everything gets cleaned up the way you hope, when would the shovels be in the ground?
By the way, before I, before I do answer that, I do want to thank members of the board and staff and other residents who have been involved with the process. Everyone's spent a lot of time on this, so very appreciative for everybody's focus, attention, and particularly, attention to detail and thoroughness. To answer your question, if everything went well, with any luck, we do have some third parties that we need to take care of. I would say ideally, we'd like to try and be in the ground by the summer of '23, and it probably, with all the work that needs to take place, I don't believe there's, we'd see any homes really being built until probably '24. So a lot, a lot of work ahead of us beyond tonight, a lot of work.
Okay. Would you like to make a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary, no, that's the next one. LD 132021 for final subdivision land development for Knickerbocker redevelopment.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So passes.
Aye.
Thank you.
See you in a year.
And then Zach, for the barbecue formality here?
If I could, I'd like to make a minor request, hopefully. There is an additional Knickerbocker-related item under 7D related to the approval of their sewer planning module. Since the applicant is here, since some of these other things might have some discussion, I wondered if the board might consider moving that up to the next item?
Sure.
Sure. So this is a resolution which would amend the township's official Act 537 plan. That's a plan that the township has to prepare to plan for and treat and convey all the sewer flows coming out of the township. Since the Knickerbocker tract is proposing a number of improvement, improvements and is not currently within our sewer planning area, this requires an amendment to our plan. So this is a resolution stating that we are comfortable with the capacity that will be generated, the improvements they'll be undertaking, and are amending our plan to that effect.
Yeah, go ahead. Yes, as part of any development. Make a motion to approve the sanitary, the sewage facilities planning module for Knickerbocker redevelopment, which is in English, a revision to the East Whiteland Township Act 537 official sewage facilities plan.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And passes.
Aye.
So, Don, I would call that 7A.
One.
One.
Last one.
I think that we've got, I think that was the two on there.
Got it.
Sorry about that. I'm still up.
Some barbecue?
You're not done with me yet. The next item here is really, that really, this really is a housekeeping item. The board previously approved a waiver of land development for Farm Boy Barbecue, which was going to take over the former Friendly site and do a small addition. I understand that that deal is no longer moving forward, and since the applicant did not execute, execute the, the resolution, accepting all of the conditions, that is sort of a deemed denial. We, we have language in there that if they don't return the resolution, accepting those conditions, it's denied. We thought it would be best for the board to formalize that by a motion. We can send a letter to that effect to the, to the applicant and to the property owner, the thinking here being that we wouldn't want somebody to try to come in with a different plan and sort of say that it's already been approved.
So if, if anyone or Farm Boy came back in, would they have to start the process all over again?
Yeah, and if it were a simple project like this, like this waiver of land development's really not a long process, but we could at least review it specifically.
It's a do-over.
Yes.
Okay.
It's a good way to put it.
I'd like to make a motion to deny waiver of land development to Farm Boy Barbecue.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes.
Next item here is for the board to consider authorizing, solicitor to draft a resolution for the following development applications. As you know, this is sort of like the discussion level for these two applications. They presented last month. There were some questions and concerns raised. The applicant was unable to attend in person, so we thought it might be best if they came back and sort of presented to the board, based on some of that feedback that was received last month. The applicant has prepared a, an updated exhibit to help orient the board to the existing conditions, the proposed conditions, and just sort of, as Scott would say, a redo, just have a, sort of a representation of that.
Sounds good. Thank you.
So I believe the applicant, both applicants and their engineer are here, so with that, I'll turn it over to Jack, if, Jack, if you don't mind.
Yes, my name is Jack Robinson from JMR Engineering. Yes, and I would here to present tonight the two projects. I don't know if you're, Zach or not. Nine and Ten Millen Road are kind of sister projects. They're, they're next to each other. I wasn't here last month. Scott Deicher of Malphistake was presenting this, and he's been the engineer on this project. I'm the overseeing engineer on, on them as well, and have some history on both of these projects. If you're familiar with the site, it's located at the south side of Millen Road. Ten Millen Road is to the west, left side of the plan, and nine is to the east, on the right side, larger tract. This plan that I think that was, that Zach had asked to put together, just kind of shows limitations of the site. The light brown is the buildings themselves. The light brown is the buildings themselves that are proposed. The reddish is kind of the no-go areas, which is far as it was right-of-way. That's a sewer right-of-way that Zach's pointing to. There's, through the entrance is a road. That's a future right-of-way for potential trail in the future that the applicant has agreed to. There's a sunoco right-of-way there as well that runs off to the left there, yeah. So actually, this site came to you, well, the township, I shouldn't say to you personally, but to the township back in 2010. I was involved in that back then. And as you know, things have changed in this site related to the adjoining site, Bishop Tube site. So what we did was, you know, we revisited this site and both sites, and in October of 2021, we came before you with the Ten Millen Road site for conditional use, and that's the one to the left. In December, we came back to you for a conditional use, for the same conditional use essentially, for the Nine Millen Road site. We probably could have done them together, but we didn't. But in October and December of last year, we did come before you for those sites. We then submitted land development for both properties after that, and then realized actually we needed to get some zoning relief. The Nine Millen Road needed a special exception for outdoor storage, which you've seen probably heard of many times, and we needed to get some relief from the distance to a residential property, which was the Bishop Tube site. So we got that, those variances and special exceptions by the zoning hearing board in the summer of this past, of this year. And we've gone through the process with the various consultants, and we're recommended approval, I think for both, in October, if I'm not correct, if I'm correct, in October of this year, we're recommended approval by the planning commission for both sites. So we are coming before you tonight for the, for a final, recommend, for a final approval by your body, of course, with the planning commission's blessing back in October. And I can answer any questions you may have about that were raised last time specifically. We do also have the applicant here, sorry, we do have the applicants here tonight, the owners as well. Mr. Jim Lees, the buyer for Nine Millen Road, Brad Brooks of Evergreen Landscaping, and Joe Forcine is also one of the owners.
I still have the question of what was contained in the storage shed uphill from Nine Millen in the southeast, south-central eastern portion of the property up the slope?
The history on that, we understand, is that was a, it's an abandoned building now, but at one point, it was used to store water. It's at the highest point in the site and to allow for pressurized water down to adjoining sites.
It was part of the Bishop Tube property?
It was somehow supplied down with water, and, you know, the point of it being there, because it was up high, it was almost like a water tower, so to speak, and I guess it added, gave them pressure if they needed, you know, they needed water to be fed. It's been since abandoned a long time.
I understand that. My concern is, we all understand downhill is very contaminated. Has there or was there any testing in this portion of the property?
As I understand, yes. The, and Jim Lees can speak to that more, but there has been the normal phase, phase environmental as you can imagine for any site, especially for these sites. And I do know that banks are involved in the transaction of these sites, and I have vetted that, vetted that out, especially if, you know, Mr. Brooks is buying the site that you're speaking of that shows that shed, and a bank is involved with that site and has vetted that out. But Jim, if you'd like to hear from Jim, he can give you more details on that, these sites.
That'd be fantastic.
Give them any more information you have on that?
Jim Lees, I'm one of the owners of both lots currently. Be glad to answer any questions.
My concern is just if there has been proper testing to figure out if there's any potential Bishop Tube contamination uphill from the obvious contaminated site. As it was part of the total site, I just want to know what that structure was used for, if it wasn't for dumping chemicals or it wasn't fed.
All it's left of now is a block foundation, and it contained a water tank at one time that was full of water and caused extra pressure, and they were using a lot down below in the buildings. Line was abandoned, and there was nothing there when we bought it in 2002. We had a Phase 1 done on the property when we bought it, and it's, it's well above the Bishop Tube property at this, not part of it.
Formerly part of it, though.
The Phase 1 didn't show any recognized environmental conditions then?
Pardon me?
The Phase 1 did not?
It did not.
Show any rec or recognized environment?
I'm sorry to interrupt. If I could just ask you to use the microphone. I know we have some people on the virtual call as well, so if you wouldn't mind just speaking more directly into the microphone?
Sorry about that.
What year was the Phase 1 done?
Phase 1, when we did the property in 2002 is when we purchased. It was done, and we also had one done subsequent to that in 2018 or 2019. We had the property under agreement, and that property was when the property was zoned residential, if you remember, and then we changed it back to industrial. But it was done at that time as well with no complications, and that was the entire property, both Nine and Ten.
There's someone in the audience that seems to have a question. If you wouldn't mind coming up to the microphone and asking? Miss?
I don't have a question. I have some comments.
Me too.
My name, email address is on there, so anybody that wants more copies, you're welcome.
We can certainly share if need be.
Who else we got? You don't have to.
We share.
Okay.
We're very friendly.
Where'd it go?
My name is Sarah Caspar, and I worked for EPA, U.S. EPA, for 16 years. And much of what I did is what is happening here at Bishop Tube. So when the response plan came out from DEP, I reviewed it, and those are my comments there, and that's what is the big problem here. Nothing can be done in the perimeters around the site until the extent of contamination has been determined, and it hasn't. And nowhere in that plan that DEP made have they, have they mentioned anything about making that? And that is going to hold up any development off-site until that's done. So what I encourage you all to do, for the sake of everybody, is to ask DEP to get on it, because until they come up with a plan that is actually workable, that is actually going to remediate the site, there isn't anybody, anything anybody can do there, because A, the forever chemical PFOS was found there, which I knew it would be because that's used commonly in metallurgy, very commonly. From the habits that you could see went on there, things were being dumped everywhere and went into the ground, into the water, et cetera. But we have no idea where that goes to, because it was never sampled for until, I think it was January of 2021. So these are things that have to be addressed so that the next steps can be done, so that the place can be remediated, so that development can take place, so that people can turn it into a park, whatever. At the present time, nobody can be there safely, because PFOS is a serious carcinogen. It does a whole bunch of other things, too. And it's listed in my, my comments there, so you can see exactly what, how many things it does. But the biggest problem, it lasts forever, which is why they're called the forever chemicals. PFOS can remain there from 51 to 81 years. So think about that. Trichloroethylene, which is the other problem, that also hangs around forever. So you can't say that it's going to sort of disperse, disappear, if within our lifetimes, perhaps. It may not, until active action is taken to remediate the site in a manner that is actually going to do it. So again, the more you can encourage DEP to do this and come up with a good plan, the better, because nobody wants something to be around in their neighborhood that is dangerous for people to live near. There is so much evidence in the village way of the effects of PFOS, too. So it's clear that it was there, and I'm talking about cancers, tumors in children, just to mention a few things. And in the interests of everybody living around here, we need to get it cleaned up, remediated in a manner that's going to be safe for people that live here, because I know you don't want more people becoming ill, more people dying of cancer, more children with tumors. I know you don't want that. And from a practical point of view, of course, you don't want it, because that's not good for the township. So that's what is going to stop them from developing, putting in their, what are they called, office buildings? They can't do it now, because until the extent of contamination is done, and we know that that place is safe, they can't do it. And that's what you need to understand. There is nothing that can be done there. No people can develop anything there until that site has been remediated and the extent of the contamination has been determined. We do know that it goes all the way down to the residents across from people's site, and we know that it's on that contaminated well on Moreland Road, Moor Hall Road. So I think we also may know that it has contaminated some other wells, drinking water wells, too. And so this is important. You want to make this area better? Ask DEP to do it and do it right. They have held up, it was 1999 that they inherited this site. It's quite a while, quite a bit of time that has passed. So that's really all that I want to say. It's kind of simple. No development until this has been remediated safely for the health of the people that live around here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like to respond?
Yes, this, this site, both sites are under an NPDS permit. DEP is fully aware of the development that is going on. If these sites are listed in any way to have to be remediated, they will be, they would have to be, and they are, they are not. The Bishop Tube site, which seems to be, these two sites continue to be tagged to that site, it is not that site. And an NPDS permit would be a different, would be a different, different animal, essentially, for that site. But for our sites, there are NPDS permits and they will be issued.
The applications are pending. They haven't been issued yet, the NPDS?
We are through, we are almost through the technical review, which is the last review for the Nine site and the Ten site. We have, we are at the admin review as well. So they wouldn't even have you submit it if there was a problem. You wouldn't get past the door.
At this point, Zach, can you bring up the waivers that we had?
The waiver, the waiver request letter?
Yeah.
For Ten Millen?
For Ten Millen.
Is there one in particular you'd like to pull up here? Would you like me to bring up the Arrow review letter or the applicant's waiver request letter where they outlined? letter, where they outline the code requirement and then their rationale for requesting a waiver? Yeah, so there's, this is the applicant's waiver request letter. This is when they, they've identified aspects of the code that they are unable or requesting permission to not comply with. There's half a dozen of them here. I could, we can have the applicant run through them quickly if you'd like, or if there's one in specific that you'd like to discuss, I can zero in on it.
There's a deferral to McMahon Associates. McMahon was in support of the waiver on the final, number six waiver is also recommended to be granted by Arrow. So the first two were recommended, denied, the last four recommended approval. Is that consistent with your understanding?
Actually, our waiver letter only lists the ones that we are requesting, which were all recommended to be approved. I think those two that were recommended to be denied were not on the list.
Dropped?
Yeah, they were dropped.
Okay, got it. All right. That helps.
Yeah, so the planning commission and Arrow are agreement with all of our waivers.
Sam?
Yeah.
I'm a little lost.
A little lost on something. You just put up the page three of three of the October 4th, 2022 letter, which was 17541 C4. And then when Rich was going through the Arrow letter, I don't see that one referenced.
Do you mind if I just pull this over to my screen so I can read it real quickly?
You know, the C4 paragraph is not listed in any of the initial six waivers that are addressed in Arrow's response.
That C4 waiver, then that's, that's the last one in our letter, is referenced in the landscape architect's review letter. Yeah, so that's, it might not be in theirs if it's in, it's in, I actually have the letter with me. Land Concepts letter. I think June 17th was their letter. That, yeah, that was called out in that Land Concepts letter.
I'm sorry, I'm following you now. You're referring to the waiver request from 17541 C4, which limits the tree removal to 20% of the existing trees on an existing wooded tract? And is your, yeah, Arrow did not opine on that. Land Concepts did not recommend or, they did not recommend approval or denial of that since that is, you know, sort of at the board's discretion? They didn't provide a professional opinion on that, one way or the other, like they would maybe a species substitution or spacing or something to that effect?
And we're not, we're actually requesting that waiver, really as a, as a caution, because the ordinance actually states, this ordinance applies to a wooded lot. However, wooded lot isn't actually defined anywhere in respect to, actually, the more wooded lot is 9 Malin Road, we're not asking for a waiver there because we don't need it. On 10, you know, it's, he's saying it applies if it's a wooded lot. And only about 30, 35% of this property is even wooded. And if you want to call it wooded, it's rather sparse. So as I said, we're asking for this waiver as more of an abundance of caution, but we are proposing to remove 12, 12-inch trees, which is what the ordinance lags as something to note. So we are removing 12, 12-inch trees, and we are proposing 47 trees. And I think that, which is actually five more than were really required. There was additional ones. I think Land Concepts letter recommended we add seven replacement trees and we ended up having 12. I think it's more of a, it's almost semantics because there's 35% of this property is wooded. It's hard to remove less than 20%. You would remove, you know, a few thousand square feet maybe at most, and you'd be over 20%. It's very easy to trip that 20% on a lot like this.
You're proposing to remove 12 and replace with 47 for an increase of 35.
That's correct.
That's to satisfy various code requirements, but the way the code reads is that if you're removing more than 20% of the 12-inch caliber trees, you have to replace them one by one. So of those trees that he just mentioned, 12 of them are replacement trees specific to that code requirement. That's all I wanted to clarify.
At the top of the hill, when projected removal of the trees, what type of, I didn't go all the way up to the top of the property, but I guess what I'm asking is, as you go up the hill, will you be removing almost all the way to the back of the property?
No. I mean, the property, of course, doesn't go all the way even to the railroad or back there, but, but no, it only removes, it really, and I didn't touch on this earlier, both of these layouts actually resemble pretty much exactly what we presented at conditional use. We haven't really changed these layouts at all through the whole planning process. We're removing the minimal amount in that area. As you can see, the dark green scallops show where the limit is, but the property, you know, the trees go beyond that, you know? Trees don't respect the property line, of course. So there's, there's more trees beyond the property line itself to the, backing up to the railroad, yeah, is a, there's a fair amount more distance there. But we're removing the minimal amount we, that we can, we have to remove. Of course, you know, that's just going to cost more money, and nobody wants to remove anymore, and you have to remove. But we also are putting a retaining wall in that is going to be an expense that we wouldn't have to incur if we decided to grade all of it. But that was part of the conditional use where we were limited on how much we were going to grade back there. So this is how the initial use shook out, so to speak, where we limited what we were going to grade and propose a wall back behind that parking lot to limit that.
The drawing isn't, isn't helping me at all in terms of knowing and understanding what is being removed at 10 Malin.
I think we have a, Zach, if you get existing features plan, we can, this actually shows the trees Xed, that plan in particular, all those Xs you see. So you see there's actually more trees being removed on the 9 Malin site. But just, just for a quick perspective, that is the trees that are going to be removed, 12 inches or greater. If you want to get these existing features, might be a little.
Your landscaping plan is sheet 7 of 14?
Yes. You can see this plan, and we only, you know, we show the tree line, that whole, this is a whole area, as you could say, has trees on it, but the only trees that we're actually showing specifically are 12 inches or greater. So there's not a whole lot of trees that are 12 inches or greater. Actually, this area was cleared some years ago, and some saplings have grown back. So that's why you don't see so many large trees. But the one, we had, we actually resurveyed this, though we, you know, this, there was an old survey I mentioned in 2010. We freshened it up. So these are the latest trees with their sizes. So there's really not many large trees in this area. There are some to be preserved in the very backs. You can see that that, the small, the trees that are against the rear property line, they're on the right, they're not to be removed. Also along the south prop, or the east, I'm sorry, west property line as well. This plan is turned from the plan we just saw. So the railroad track is to the right. So you can see those perimeter trees along the rear and then the side are to be saved. Somehow, there's been trees allowed to grow in that right of way. I'm not sure how the pipeline companies allowed that, but there were some large trees there as well.
I know my personal concern is, is the waiver with removing those trees. I'd like the opportunity to maybe to go out there and walk that with you one more time, or a time.
Okay, I, yeah, I guess I can't, you know, argue other than to say that I do think that this is more of, because there, it's only a small portion of this site has wooded, is wooded, it's impossible to not have to get a waiver, really, if you're going to develop any of it, because you can trip 20% quite easily. So I mean, I, I could absolutely walk the site. I think the client just doesn't want to have to wait. We've already been waited in one month. I mean, is it possible we could walk the site with the resolution being drafted and perhaps be subject to any conditions that we, that we have in the field?
Trees are the issue, right?
Trees are, trees are the issue.
Contamination is the issue.
Contamination is the issue here with Peter. So I'm not sure how to resolve that.
Well, the other way to resolve that is to require that the NPDS permit that's issued, I think, taken into consideration, assure that the stormwater and earth disturbance does not contribute to any contamination or adverse effect of the downstream, which that's what they do, that's what those permits do. So we can put it in a condition to highlight it to DEP, but that's what an NPDS does, right?
That's right. I think people forget what that even stands for. It stands for National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, which I think most people even know what that means, but that's specifically.
We can make it a clearer condition in our resolution, but that is what it does. It's supposed to, DEP.
They're supposed to allow.
We can't dictate to DEP. We can put a condition in our resolution and then review the NPDS when it's issued. Right? That's, that would be the sequence. There, yeah.
That's the quote, yes.
Now, that's, that's only, that's, 10 Malin is across the street. 10 Malin, does that have anything at all to do with this? I mean, it doesn't look it. I'm no environmental scientist, but 9 Malin is north, north, south of Bishop's.
Jack, I know you weren't the design engineer. I know you were involved more early on in the process. You're familiar with the property. Can you speak to the stormwater design? I know when I spoke with Scott, he had referenced the fact that the stormwater was designed such that it would capture the stormwater, the existing runoff and the future from the development, send it to stormwater basements for water, basins, basins, for water quality management and, you know, general infiltration, and then discharge into the stream after it's been treated, whereas the existing condition flows over land to the Bishop Tube property. I believe his point was that there would be less water flowing over land to the Bishop Tube site, and in theory, creating runoff issues, exacerbating the downstream issues from that, whereas the proposed condition would treat it and discharge it into a stream and therefore bypass the site. Is that correct, or maybe you're not able to speak to that?
Yeah, I mean, you can pull it up, I can show you. We are under, due to the karst in this area, infiltration is a difficult thing. So we've actually designed this as something that's, I'll say, sort of new. It's not new to Maryland, but a newer concept. It's called managed release concept. It's called MRC. So, and we've been doing these more often, especially in karst areas. So this is an MRC. It's a, it's a much more complicated design with DEP than requires a lot of, I'll say, belt and suspenders. It requires a large loading ratio, which means, which means you need to spread things out. A basin was very difficult to design. The bottom of it is, has been made quite large, and it was seen unnecessarily so to us because it's quite large to, to spread out the stormwater. It actually captures mostly forested woodland, but because it captures such a large area, the idea is that the stormwater has to spread out. Doesn't matter if it's from a tall building or whatever, because it has a certain acreage draining to it, we have to spread that water out. So this water, this, that, this basin is, as you can see, this site has a lot of stormwater on it. It actually has two basins on it. There's a basin to the right, you see with the stone, and then there's a basin to the immediate right of the smaller shed. There's two basins on it. Considering what we're, what we're building, there's a lot of stormwater here. And on top of that, I should mention, there's a third system that is up slope of the capizoidal shaped system. So there's, there's a long pipe that you can see there. This was quite, Scott will tell you, my office was quite difficult, this design. And it's mostly just because we have a lot of area drain to it, even though it's mostly protected woodlands. But this is very conservatively designed.
This is 9 Malin.
This is 9, yes. Very conservatively designed.
Right now, with no development, rain falls down and runs right over Bishop Tube.
Correct.
Right? No controls whatsoever.
Exactly.
If this is developed, there are controls put in place to restrict the post-development flow to be less than the pre-development flow and to direct it in a certain way around Bishop Tube.
That's correct. And yeah, to your point, the discharge point is that upper right, it looks like a bullseye to the upper right. So the water, after being treated through three different systems, is directed away from the Bishop Tube site, on the upper right side.
As opposed to now, where it runs right over the Bishop Tube site.
Right now, yeah, that whole hill from the, from the, that water tower you were talking about, the building, not tower, but that building, just sheets, sheets all the way down.
The reason I bring that up is because I think it was a specific comment that was made at last month's meeting, that the increased impervious on this site would exacerbate the issues there. I just wanted it to be at least clarified somewhat in response to that question, how the system was set up. Thank you.
Donna, can you, can you give me, give us the comments?
Yes, we have comments. They've been waiting patiently. Debbie Mobel, you want to unmute yourself, please?
Debbie Mobel, 42 Village Way. Um, a comment was made by the gentleman, you know, would not have even gotten through. Well, I beg to differ with you, sir. Bishop Tube got past the door, the magic DPA door. DPA has not done a thorough job on any of this site since 1999. So we have no idea the full extent of the testing. What we're asking for, you know, is to know that full extent of the testing on your site. What chemicals were tested for? How far was the range tested? Have the chemicals, have the testing been done for the new variants that the state is now recommending be tested for? You know, and that data needs to be given to the township so they can review it in a timely manner. I understand that your employers are getting antsy or they've waited long enough, but I've watched this crew at this township meeting personally on at least three occasions that I can think of where they couldn't answer the questions that the supervisors had. So it's not just a matter of them not being ready to give you an answer, it's also a matter of you not having answers to their questions, which is why you were sent here. Which is why you were sent here today. Because last month was, I cannot even use the language that I would commonly use for what I saw in the last presentation that was given. So, you know, I'm sorry that the two properties are linked, but you knew that when you got involved with this project. You knew that Bishop Two once used that property, even if it was just to put water downhill. But again, we don't know that, because it's not been tested. You knew that they were linked, because the two properties are sitting side by side. You know, these are commonly known facts. And because this process is taking a long time, I'm very sorry, but the people in this township have had it. We have had it with rushed decisions and businesses pushing things through because they've waited long enough. Our supervisors are here to serve the citizens of this township. And if they need information, that's what they need to make a decision. You know? And right now, it doesn't sound to me like a clear information about what's contaminating that site is truly there. You know? Put the reports on their desk. Put current reports on their desk. And then give them an opportunity to review it. Thank you.
Yes, there's someone else that would like to speak. Yeah, that's okay. She's been waiting a while. Barb, go ahead.
Thank you. Hi, Barbara Arnold, 31 Fox Stocker. I will be brief. I just first wanted to thank Sarah for handing out the paperwork to you. And I hope that you do look at that. She is a valuable resource to our group and to you as well. And I want to say that I agree with everything that Debbie Mobel said. You know, I'm sorry if people are being held up by this, but it is bigger than that. And I just wanted to urge you to please move with extreme caution in developing nine and ten Malin Road to make sure that it won't exacerbate the toxicity that's already known at the Bishop Tube site. Just, you know, please, as Debbie said, you know, you're representing us and we want to be safe. And just please take your time and gather all the information you possibly can. Thank you very much.
Okay, Sarah, why don't you come forward?
As of now, thanks. There is no treatment for PFAS, which is another reason why they're called forever chemicals. So, having your runoff go into a certain area and saying you're going to treat that, it's not going to happen, because you cannot. You don't have the tools to do it. What has been done where people's well water is contaminated, they have to install certain types of filters, and they're called GAC, G-A-C, and they have to be changed regularly. Well, you can't do that for a runoff area. That's pretty hard to do. So all of these things need to be disturbed. I mean, need to, that was something else I was going to say. Any ground that is disturbed is going to release more of this stuff. It's also airborne. You have to realize just what this can do before you can fight it. And that's why you guys need to have answers, as was said. And so please do it for your own sakes and for the sake of the township as well, so that people can make a plan that would work for a development. I think that's it. So I'll shut up, at least for a while. Thank you. Just one more thing. This was developed by DuPont and 3M, because it does such a good job. And it's cheap to create, to make, and it makes everything go better, except when you try to get rid of it.
I would suggest-
Did I turn it off?
Kind of leaning towards a delay at this point in time.
Yeah, I would suggest, I know you don't want delay, I know you're... I would suggest the township requesting a copy of the most recent Phase One that the owner has and have it reviewed by our environmental person. It's clean, as stated, it's clean. Water does flow, we know, away from this site, nine and 10. The groundwater from Bishop Two flows towards Route 30, flows towards People's Lake, okay? That's the opposite direction from this property. That is a fact also, from what we've been told time and time again. So odds are, if the applicant is willing to give us a copy of the most recent Phase One, have our environmental guy look at it, and see if we concur that there's no contamination with this site. And our engineer has reviewed, is reviewing the storm, in addition to DEP, reviewing the stormwater structure, which we're understand will direct even rainwater away from and around Bishop Two. I don't know what else we can do.
Right, and that all has been reviewed and approved by our already. They're ahead of DEP.
Right.
I think that my client would really wish that, you know, since we've been going through this for so long, that this would have been brought to our attention. I think that-
It has it!
We really are being dragged down by something that's next door, obviously. And I think that's obvious here. Are you, Jim, are you amenable to that? Okay.
Okay, great.
All right. And would you like to meet in field?
Yeah, I'll work through Zach and he and I and you. We can get together and anyone else on the board that wants to do a further walkthrough up there in short order.
Yes, I know that, you know, Mr. Brooks, he'll be still here. Mr. Brooks is definitely anxious and ready to move his business here. It's Evergreen Landscaping, and he is the one that is, the site that you see on the screen is the one that is looking to build there. So he's, the other site doesn't have a buyer yet, but this site, that is the primary site.
So he can't wait to build all that stormwater?
Yeah, that's the one part he doesn't want to.
I know, I know, I know.
But his springtime is going to be busy.
This'll address the raised issue. I think.
So Bernadette, can we make a motion to delay?
Well, there's a extension built in.
And I think, I know where Zach's going with this, is the next meeting is January 11th. Normally at this meeting, we would make a motion for the staff and myself to start drafting the resolution in order to do it at the January 11th, because our time runs out on January 31st. So technically, I'm gonna, we're gonna need another extension, is what Zach's going to tell me in a minute.
You read my mind.
What's the February date?
February board meeting date is the 8th. So we would, in order to follow our normal process, the two-step process, and to allow some time for our environmental consultant to review the Phase One and any other environmental data you have, I don't know if there's water, there's monitoring wells nearby that we could somehow tap into to kind of complete the picture a little bit, to pick up some gaps that the Phase One might not close? I would say at least until the February meeting, if you guys are amenable to it.
Yes, I mean, that implies that, you know, anything that Jim provides could be looked at relatively, you know, but I know we're going to, because Christmas coming up, so as long as we can be back in January, you know, we can provide those documents.
Yeah, it's a pretty quick review, obviously, but we will, if you send it to us, we'll get it off to our environmental consultant and try to get whatever we can heading into that meeting. I would say, depending on the result of that, we can, you and I can discuss, I can discuss with the solicitor and whomever attendance at that time, depending on the results of that.
They're all electronic now. An email could go out momentarily, we know, I know.
Thank you.
So just to, for the record, we, it sounds like you're agreeable to the extension, at least until February 8th?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And if you want that in writing, we can-
Yes. Going to need that writing, yes. At this time, we could act on the January 31st with the understanding that the applicant has made a offer to provide us with the written extension until February 8th. So we wouldn't have to make a motion for any type of resolution at this point, drafting of the resolution.
You want, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the extension till January 31st, 2023, to make a decision on land development, applications for nine Malin Route and 10 Malin Route, with the understanding that the applicant has agreed to provide a written extension further to February 8th, 2023, a whole eight days later.
No second?
No second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, John. Sarah, if you have more copies, I think you should share it with the board, if you happen to have. Can't hurt.
Oh, I gave it back to him.
I stole it.
It's okay.
We'll take it.
And if you want to send through their emails-
You can always find our emails.
Scan it, just scan it, scan it.
I want you to leave, we're going to take care of it internally for everyone to have. So we're good. We're going high-tech, we're going to scan it. All right?
Still high-tech.
I understand, but this applies to, if you have a copy of the response from the DEP as to their employees operating here, I'd rather say, make sure they know what that means. And so, I thank you.
Moving on to item eight, John?
All right, the zoning hearing boards, next meeting is next week, December 20th. They'll only be having one hearing that evening. It's the hearing for 11 Buttonwood Avenue. It's a non-conforming lot, doesn't meet size requirements and some minor setback requirements. They're taking a story and a half house, going to put a second story on it. Apparently, they've already been notified. All the neighbors have letters of support ready. One neighbor called and inquired and asked those basic questions of me yesterday. And property's been posted and notices have gone out, and so far, we haven't heard anything in opposition of it.
Great.
Sounds like- I think that's clean.
Yeah, no reason to send something.
Public comments. Anybody want to make public comment?
Wishing everyone a happy holiday.
That's a, that's the richest public comment. Any other public comment? We have, we have someone.
Sorry, Rich.
All right. You are the public.
Sorry. Sorry to keep you all here late. My name is Bob Logan. I'm a longtime resident of the township. Currently live on Bass Cove in the Lockwood Chase development. I've got three things, all will be brief. I'm a relatively new member of Chester Valley Golf Club. I thank the board for addressing that issue and moving it along. That's a good step. That's going to be a long process for us. Number two, I served on the fire department board, I think with Rich, and I currently work with John and Rich on the pension board. I just wanted, I mean, there's a lot of testimonials about John and he's, you know, all these sort of technical things that he was this and that, and this and this, and process and design and stuff. I just want to say John Nagel is a really good guy. That's high compliments for me, but he's a really good guy. You're welcome, John. Third thing is, it's about traffic. It's more about safety than it's about traffic. In the Lockwood Chase development, which basically is at the corner of King Road and 352, we come out of the development every day and we're sitting there staring at that traffic light, which is fine. You get eventually get a left turn arrow, and that's fine. The safety issue is that the people who are coming westbound out of the borough, they don't know what right on red means. I don't know if they can't read, I don't know if they didn't pass their driver's test. They have no clue what that's about. I go through that light multiple times per day, and my wife in addition. It's like, you can get to the point, you sit there, you can see somebody coming at you, and you just know there's going to be a problem, because they just, they don't get it. I'm not, I don't know, I'm not an engineer. Seems to me, and I know there was a big brouhaha about that intersection a year or two ago, and that all went away. Seems to me if somebody put a sign or signs visible to the people coming out of the borough headed west, that hey, you know, the opposing traffic, you know, they have, they have a green light, you know, pay attention to them. I formed, before I lived in Lockwood, I lived on Oak Hill Circle, which is a little further west, you come in off the summit, backs up to the train tracks. And I, and it was an issue back then. And I remember asking the township, you know, what can you do to make that intersection safer? I said, why don't you make it a no turn on red? And I wish I remembered the policeman's name, but they came back, I guess they did a study of some sort, and they said, sorry, it's more important to us that we keep traffic moving, and that's why we're not going to make it, you know, no right on red. And the famous quote was, but Mr. Logan, if you are in an accident, don't worry, you'll be in the right. And I'm like, well, that's, that's not very reassuring. But anyway, I'm requesting, I don't, I said make, write a letter or, you know, send something official, but if the board would just consider having somebody take a look at that intersection. And I'm not talking about all the stuff that goes back and forth on 352. Just do something so that the people who are headed on west- back and forth on 352, just do something so that the people who are headed on westbound King coming out of the borough know that the people who are coming headed east are probably, most of the problems you try and make a left, they actually put a, a traffic light in relatively recently to say that we have a green arrow. That doesn't really do anything to help us. The problem is the people who are coming toward us, they have no clue what's going on. So if somehow you could address that issue and make it safe, greatly appreciated.
Thank you very much.
Well, look, actually, roundabout might not save that problem, might make it worse.
Bob, let me...
Peter Fixler asked for a roundabout?
There's the guy.
Yes. I just want to respond to your situation. I'm not sure exactly how that works up there, but you're saying, so the vehicles traveling west only have red globes, so they're making a right on red on a red globe. Okay, so the only thing that we could do with that situation now is see if we can have a right turn arrow. So in other words, it's right turn for when no one's on the other end, so that we can keep traffic going west. And they can make a right as long as, but when the green arrow is for people coming east and they're trying to make a left on to northbound 352?
Correct.
That would change the arrow going west on King Road to red, so that you wouldn't be able to make that right turn. It's a pretty common thing, so we will look into that and see what, how difficult it would be to make that arrangement.
I don't know the solution, I'm not being a smartass, which is actually unusual. I don't know the answer. I'm just asking somebody to address the issue and see if they can make it more safe.
That's the answer.
There you go.
I mean, that's, that's what that whole situation I just described is for.
There you go.
So, we'll look at it.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Bob, did you, did you leave a telephone number or an email on the sign-in sheet? Okay, all right, good. In case...
Now, where is?
Don, any other general comments? Okay, moving on to item 10, I will read the consent agenda, and should you have any questions, pause me and I will answer them. 10A, approve the meeting minutes from November 9, 2022. B, ratify the payments, the bills for $990,686.51 for November of 2022. Accept the treasurer's report as of October 31st, 2022. Approve three-year agreement authorizing Hugh Associates to collect residential and commercial recycling data and prepare PADP 904 recycling grant applications for East Whiteland Township at $6,000 each year. Approve the CCRERT cost and resolution information, resolution number 2022-33. F, ratify the Backton Hill Park regrading behind BMP for an amount of $29,979 to address the drainage issue problem. Amazingly, we end up being $15,000 less than last month for that project. Good job, John. You get the rest of the night off.
Okay.
You can leave. Approve proposal from Arrow to provide stormwater MS4 reporting services for 2023 in the amount of $40,000. Accept the proposal for conceptual design for Comfort Station intersection of Chester County Trail and Mill Lane in the amount of $5,000.
Scott, excuse me, this, this next one, the amount of the release has changed. Instead of 156,000, I can read the number if you'd like.
Sure. Just going back on H is that we, we ended up meeting with the folks at, at Chester County on, on the Comfort Station, so we're in collaboration with them to get that project completed. So, approve payment number nine to the MECO construction company in the amount of 100? Another lowering one. For total to date payment in the amount of...
I, yeah, I can't do that math off the top of my head, but it's less.
That's $1,479,299.
That's why you're our engineer.
I'm impressed, and actually where you want to be. And finally, J, consider proposal from RT Environmental Services for Phase One environmental assessment at 164 Conestoga Road for a price not to exceed $2,485. Any questions beyond that? Would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And in honor?
Very good.
Bang, bang a gong.
Bang a gong? Yeah. Get it on. There you go. Hey!